I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the row.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
We have a quorum. And I will ask that everyone stand for the prayer and pledge. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we know that you are the source of all our blessings. We thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight so that we may do business of this great city. May your hand of blessings be on this meeting. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all have received copies of the minutes of the March 24, 2015 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? If there is none, do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask clerk to call the row.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Shinholster? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Thank Karen. I'll recognize Meredith Lipson of Malden &amp; Jenkins to give us an annual audit report. Meredith, if you will, please come to the podium.
Good evening. Again, my name is Meredith Lipson. I'm with Malden &amp; Jenkins CPA firm. And I'm here to present to you the results of the fiscal year 2014 annual audit. Of course, the audit was completed and filed with the state in December, in advance of when it was actually due. The information that I just passed out to you is what we refer to as our auditor's discussion and analysis. It's really just a brief summary of the audit as a whole. It also includes some graphs and charts regarding your major funds, the general fund, your water and sewer fund, some information about any recommendations that came out of our audit, any findings, as well as information pertaining to some of the new governmental accounting standards, board standards that are out there on the horizon that you all will have to address in the coming years. Just briefly, I wanted to talk about the comprehensive annual financial report, the big set of financial statements that you all also have. I'm not sure if you all are aware, but this is the fiscal year 2013 was the 28th year that you all had received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And that's a long time. So I just want to congratulate you all for continuing to prepare that report. And the 2014 comprehensive annual financial report was submitted to GFOA in December. And we certainly anticipate that you all will receive that award for fiscal year 14 to be your 29th consecutive year. Oh, you have? Okay. Well, great. Good. 29 years then. As far as your fiscal year 2014 audit goes, we did issue an unmodified opinion. That's the clean opinion, the opinion that you want to get. As always, the financial statements are the responsibility of management and board. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements based on audit procedures. And again, it was an unmodified, clean opinion. As you know, the comprehensive annual financial report is quite involved. It's, gosh, a little over 100 pages. So what I always recommend to the readers of the comprehensive annual financial report is if you don't have time to look at anything else, please look at the management's discussion and analysis. It begins on page four of the comprehensive annual financial report and goes through page 14 or 15. This is a really good overview of the financial activities for fiscal year 2014. And it's written by management. It's not written by Malden &amp; Jenkins. We do make sure that the information and the account balances and so forth are consistent with the financial statements, but it is written by management. And again, it's a really good synopsis of the financial report as a whole. As far as your actual funds of the city, of course, your general fund is the heart and soul of your operations, where pretty much the majority of your operations flow through here, as well as the majority of your revenues. The general fund ended the fiscal year with approximately $2.6 million in fund balance, which is the difference between your assets and your liabilities. That's an increase of just over $315,000 for the fiscal year. Your special purpose localization sales tax, you currently have approximately $8 million, or you had at June 30, 2014, $8 million still available at that point to fund the SPOSS projects going forward. During the year, your SPOSS revenues were about $2.8 million, expenditures about $2.6 million. So you're keeping up your revenues and expenditures for that SPOSS are keeping up. Generally, what happens is the revenues come in faster at the beginning as you try to get these projects underway. And so the amount that you have is expected to decrease over time as those projects are funded. Couple other funds that you have that are of significance, your water and sewer fund. What's really important about your water and sewer fund, as well as your solid waste fund, are that the operating revenues are sufficient to cover your operating expenses. These funds are operated much like a business, because that's what they really are. They're a business. They're serving customers. And for both your water and sewer fund and your solid waste fund, you did have revenues, operating revenues sufficient to cover the costs of the operations. As far as water and sewer fund, you had operating income, which is the difference between your revenues and expenses of about $1.5 million. And your solid waste fund, you had an excess of operating revenues over expenses of about $270,000. So that's really important, that that always be a positive number and that you're generating positive cash flows from your operations. As far as the report itself, it's very much in the same format as you've seen in the past. There are footnotes that follow the basic financial statements that give a lot of detail. And then even following that are more detail behind the numbers that you see in your basic financial statements. We also have a report that's included in here under government auditing standards that reports on our consideration of internal controls and compliance. We don't give an opinion, but we do let you all know that looking at internal controls and compliance are a part of our audit process. As far as the other document that I passed out this evening, the auditor's discussion analysis, as I mentioned, this is really just kind of a summary, a lot of it, of what I've just spoken about. But for you all to have, because, you know, to look back in the future if you have questions, just a couple of things to draw your attention to. On page six, we have charts that show the sources of your general fund revenues and how those revenues are used, your general fund expenditures. In both cases, revenues and expenditures, they increased over fiscal year 2013, which you all had expected that, you budgeted that way. Your revenues increased mainly over 2013 due to an increase in taxes of about $153,000. That's other taxes. Increase in property taxes of $125,000 and just an increase in other general miscellaneous revenues of about $130,000. Also increased was transfers that come from other funds. As in a lot of, as with a lot of the governments that we work with, your enterprise funds, your water, sewer, solid waste, they do at times assist the general fund in transfer funds to help fund operations in times where sometimes expenditures are ahead of the revenues that you're generating. And that was the case in fiscal year 2014 as well. Again, as I mentioned, you can see on page seven, your fund balance at June 30, 2014 was about $2.625 million, an increase over the prior year of about $300,000. As far as results of our audit, as far as any findings, recommendations, or so forth, we did have a couple of findings mainly related to audit adjustments. And I think I've talked to you guys about these, just as I've talked to most councils and commissions. A lot of times, there are timing issues when you get to the end of your year and adjustments have to be made to bring expenses back in. You know, you don't get your invoice until after the year end, but to book those as accruals. And that's a situation that happened this year. There were some accruals that needed to be booked regarding revenue, actually. And because of the dollar amount of those adjustments, they fall into what we call a finding. Nothing of any really concern there. It's just as auditors, we're required to report certain things over a threshold as findings. But again, it was just, it was an accrual adjustment. Also, we had similar situations with our audit of the Downtown Development Authority, the component unit. They had some accruals that had not been recorded, and so those were recorded as well. And then we did have the one instance of noncompliance, which I think you all certainly know about and has been beat many times. The investments that you all were given some advice as far as how to invest some funds, and those weren't allowed in accordance with state law. But, you know, once that was determined, there was an immediate move of those funds back into allowable investments. No money was lost or anything of that nature. It was just a shift. But because it did occur during the fiscal year, we did have to disclose that. A few recommendations that we have relating to segregation of duties. For the most part, the city does a really good job of internal controls and making sure duties are segregated amongst individuals. No one person has the ability to flow transactions through that could, you know, potentially be misclassified or potential for, you know, always abuse. But there is one little issue with segregation of duties having to do with changes to master files that we just recommend you all take a look at and address that. A couple of very small due-to-from accounts between some of your smaller funds, very small balances. But again, our recommendation is just to try to eliminate those, just to make for a much cleaner presentation. And then we had several recommendations related to the Downtown Development Authority, again, having to do with maintaining invoice, copies of invoices, you know, maintain detailed listings of receivables, things of that nature. And I think they're working towards getting some accounting assistance in there, because that's not really the forte of those that are over there. But for the most part, it was a really smooth audit, good audit. The finance department does an excellent job of getting together the things that we need and making our job, you know, easier to get in and get out, which is what everybody wants. One thing I do want to mention to you all, as far as one of the standards that's coming onboard for fiscal year 2015, is GASP number 68, whereby you all will have to record the net pension liability in your financial report as a liability. For the most part, it will go on at the government-wide level. It won't be recorded in the general fund. But if that had been recorded at June 30, 2014, it would have been approximately $5.2 million, which sounds like a lot, and it is, but it's nowhere near the amount that a lot of our governments are seeing, hundreds of millions of dollars for some of our clients up in the big Atlanta areas and so forth. But it's something that everyone is having to do. I don't know of any government that does not have a liability, if they have one of these defined benefit plans. And the good thing is, we've kind of tried to feel around and see what kind of effect that's going to have with rating agencies and financial institutions. What are they going to think about it? And they're very aware that it's out there, but we're not seeing that they're going to have, they're going to change the way they look at governments or individually, you know, as far as bond ratings or loaning funds or anything of that nature because of that liability going on, because everyone's having to do it. And it is a future liability.
And you said that was GASP 68?
Yes, ma'am. Again, I just want to thank you all for having me here, and I'll be glad to address any questions that you may have.
Yes, Ms. Lipson, you noted that, and I see this here on page 14 of the report, in regards to the investments that were made outside of state law, the mutual funds, annuities, rather. And you say that these have shown not to have lost any value, but according to the financial statements that I have here before me, these accounts begin with a balance of Water and Sewer Fund number three, $1.87 million. Water and Sewer Reserve Fund number four at $500,000. And SPOSS 2012 number two at $3 million.
I'm not sure what you're looking at. Can you tell me what page you're looking at?
These are copies of financial documents that were obtained under open records request from the city. And in March, those numbers are consistent. They are consistent through April, May, June, July, August, September, and October. And then in November, those funds, Water and Sewer Reserve number three, which was at $1.87 million, depreciated to $1.85 million. Water and Sewer Reserve number four from $500,000 to $498. And SPOSS 2012 number two from $2.75 to $2.72.
November of what year?
2014. Would these not be covered in this current audit?
No.
This is 1314 audit.
And also, the investments, you have to remember, the recording of investments under government auditing standards is entirely different than under general business accounting. GASP standards are very different than FASB standards, and FASB standards is what the general businesses follow. Government have a whole different set of standards. And so with these investments, there are unrealized gains and losses. And there's also, the city also has investments in some treasuries that those do fluctuate the market value. But as far as the money that went to those annuities that was very quickly turned around and put back into allowable investments, there was no loss of money at all.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Does anyone else have anything? Thank you, Meredith.
You're welcome.
We have two public hearings to consider tonight. The procedure for each of these hearings will be as followed. Once it has been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment. We will then hear the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The chair will recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment. The chair will then hear from any person who would like to speak in opposition of the amendment. We will then give an opportunity for rebuttal. When the chair recognizes any person or persons who would like to testify, I would ask that you first give your name and your address for the record. Anyone who would like to speak is encouraged to do so. However, in the essence of time, I am requesting that you keep your comments as brief as possible. The first hearing is to consider ordinance 01502-003 to amend the land development code to rezone 300 North Columbia Street from OI to MR2. Has this public hearing been correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to read this ordinance in caption.
This is to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance submitting the land development code to rezon property located at 300 North Columbia Street from OI to MR2. Property is currently owned by S. and M. Medical LLC and will be combined and sold in order to convert the structures into approximately 24 housing units with a total of approximately 72 bedrooms.
I was just advised by the attorney that both, that these two parcels will be together. And Marvin, do you want to come up and clarify that, please?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, I would say if mayor and council are now, we can combine these into one public hearing if we can have the clerk read the second ordinance. This is Lafayette Square, the buildings. So one parcel is contingent upon the other parcel as far as it gets rezoned. If one doesn't pass, we don't want the other to pass. So we can do this in one public hearing, if that's okay.
Okay. Does anybody on council object to that? Okay, then that's what we will do. Okay. And Mr. Danusa, would you please read the second one by caption?
This to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance submitting the land development code to rezon property located at 541 West Montgomery Street from OI to MR2. Property is currently owned by S. and M. Medical LLC and will be combined and sold in order to convert the structures into approximately 24 housing units with a total of approximately 72 bedrooms.
And that was ordinance 1502-004 that was read in caption. And was that one also correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
We have already had you to read it. So what is the advisory of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
They were both recommended for approval.
Both of them were recommended for approval. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of these amendments?
Yeah, now I'm going to make just one speech, and then we'll introduce the developer or something. They're not really here, but this is, like I explained, Lafayette Square. They're both two buildings, and what the developers are wanting to do is to convert them into apartments. They're looking at three or two bedroom apartments, maybe approximately 24 total housing units out of both buildings. Any outside changes will have to go before HPC. The developer has been made aware of this because it is within the historic district. So really, there's going to be minimum change to these buildings when the conversion actually takes place. So I just wanted to explain that to y'all before they speak. Any questions?
Is anyone here? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this? You're going to come up. Would you please give your name and your address, please?
Yes, ma'am, Mark Hurt, 246 Crowell Road, Millersville. And like I said, we're going to make minimum changes to the outside and try and make apartments, 24 apartments or 72 bedrooms, basically. There might be some changes in there as we go, but we'll certainly keep the council or whoever we need to in the know and all of that.
What, oh, Mark, is it, is there part of that property private property? I mean, of the total property? And is that part of it? Or is it all of the property? Or is it just specific buildings? We got what's on its face?
Well, I think there are two parcels, but it's just, you know, law will be combined into one. It's just the two buildings and the apartment. There is a...
I'm talking about Lafayette Square as we know it.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, the condo is not part of it.
Okay, that's, yeah, I knew there was part of it that was developed and actually purchased by individuals or whatever. Okay, so that's not part of it. It's what was a common rented area for commercial.
Correct.
Is there anyone else that has a question? Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone on council that would ask a question or make a statement? This concludes our... This concludes the presentation of evidence. May I have a motion on this ordinance?
Motion we approve.
Do I hear a second? I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the row.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Shinholster? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Motion carries. I move to review business and ask the clerk to read resolution 1504-017 by caption.
To authorize the review committee's recommendation of Hoff Statter and Associates to provide engineering services for the Department of Community Affairs fiscal year 2015 Community Development Block Grant. To authorize acting Mayor Jeanette Walden to sign a memorandum of selection for professional services under the federal procurement process.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Still move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the row.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Shinholster? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll ask the clerk to read resolution 1504-018 by caption.
To appoint Judge Todd Blackwell as municipal election superintendent. To authorize acting Mayor Jeanette Walden to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Judge Blackwell and Bowen County to provide election services to the city of Millersville for the year 2015 and for other purposes.
You've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Walden, probably would be helpful if I gave a little bit of the background on this since we're on the eve of qualifying for the office of mayor. Ms. Russian learned early last week that the city would not be getting a waiver from the state election folks to hold this election on June 16, 2015 by electronic voting machines, because as in past years, Ms. Russian is not certified. But we have always had an arrangement with, she's not certified for the electronic voting machines. She's always held a very good election, and with the help of Judge Blackwell, our elections have been very, very well run. But the state informed her that there would not be a waiver. And therefore, if she was going to be the election superintendent and she was going to hold the election, that we would have to have the election held on paper ballots. And I think everybody was of the opinion that that was not the way that we would want to hold this or any other election, since the public seems, year after year, to be more accepting of the electronic voting. more accepting of the electronic voting, voting machines. Ms. Russian offered to step aside and suggested that we discuss the matter with Judge Blackwell and the county. We had already had plans to discuss with Judge Blackwell his holding of the November election relative to the question of consolidation, similar to the agreement that we entered into with him and the county the first time Representative Kidd ran for, for that seat. And so we, Mr. Jarrett and I took the opportunity last week to meet with Judge Blackwell, the county manager, the county registrar, and the county attorney and to see whether or not we, how we were going to proceed. Judge Blackwell and the other county officials were extremely gracious in offering, first of all, with Judge Blackwell to serve as the election superintendent. And then, of course, we would receive the typical services that we receive from the county. And he is also, Judge Blackwell has, has agreed that he will handle the rest of the elections for 2015 for the compensation that was to be paid to Ms. Russian. Ms. Russian will still be overseeing qualifying, which starts tomorrow, and, but Judge Blackwell will serve as the election superintendent. Early voting will take place at the courthouse. And so I wanted to give you a little bit of background since we're on the eve of qualifying for the mayor's office. That's how this came, came about, and we're very appreciative of Ms. Russian bringing it to our attention and allowing us to meet with the county, to get them on board, to supporting us. As I said, Judge Blackwell's always handled the electronic voting machines, but for some reason this year, that was not going to, since Ms. Russian was not certified, she was not going to be able to sign off on it. So, so that's where we are. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but that's the purpose for making this switch. Again, qualifying, just as the notice for the call says, will take place here at City Hall. Ms. Russian will handle that. Judge Blackwell has asked her to handle it. She's agreed, and, and everything else will be as it should.
Does anyone else have any questions on council? Then I'll ask the clerk to call the road.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
That passes. We have one alcohol license application to consider. I'll ask the clerk to present that application.
This is for Armando Puebla on behalf of Puebla's Mexican Restaurant LLC, doing business as Puebla's. It's located at 2400 North Columbia Street and is for liquor license consumptional premises.
You have heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about it?
I noticed that the top, that this is in addition to the board license they already have. Thank you.
Yes, sir, this is just, just for the liquor portion of it.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the road.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
That passes. The next item on the agenda, agenda is an appointment to the housing authority. At the request of the board of the housing authority, I am announcing that I have appointed Jacqueline Larkin as the resident commission, and she will have, she is, is to be, and I will also reappoint Mr. Fred Van Horn to that board, and they had also requested that he stay on that board. And I also have another announcement. I am pleased to announce that we will be having the Film Festival in Millisville again this year as a kickoff, and as acting mayor, I will be signing a proclamation in, in the city hall this Friday at 3:00, declaring this weekend as Millisville Film Festival weekend. Is there any further business?
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask about my appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board. I understand at this point that that appointment is, or that recommendation, rather, is complete. When might the fourth district be represented on the Planning and Zoning Board?
Well, Mr. Jarrett, have you turned that name and that address-
Yes.
-into Mr. Jarrett?
Yes, ma'am, I have.
Then Mr. Jarrett will see to it. I'm sure that he gives it to me and possibly by the next meeting, but there's one thing about it. I probably along with the rest of the council, because I would make the recommendation, but then the council would have to approve it, we may want to meet him and talk to him because I don't like to vote on anyone or recommend someone that I haven't at least met.
That is fine. If that is part of the procedure, I'll be more than happy to assist with that, although I would like to ask that if there is a written outline of this procedure, that would be most helpful for future appointments. The last recommendation that I made, I simply made an email connection to the Planning and Zoning Board along with a name and a telephone number, and that seemed to work out just fine. This go around, I submitted in a similar fashion, the name of the individual along with an email connection, and it has sat in an inbox for quite some time before it was pointed out that the address of the individual was necessary. I have since supplied that information and hope that this will move forward with the recommendation. But please do let me know of any way that I can be of assistance.
Well, that's the, that's the procedure that we all do. Not only, not only you, but every council member has to follow that procedure, and that has been done by everyone.
Yes, ma'am. Where is that procedure?
So you are following the same procedure that everybody else is following.
Where, where is that procedure written? Just, just for my own knowledge?
What procedure?
The procedure for an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board.
In the zoning ordinance.
It is in the zoning ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, so, but you can get it from Ms. Graham.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, also, I think with his appointment was Ms. Seabrooks, because I have a copy of her resume or something when he, when he requested that she be appointed. I, I still have the paper that he gave us, and it was a resume attached to it that each one of the council members got received, so we knew exactly, exactly who it was and knew some things about her.
Have you done a resume?
So, and we don't have anything on this one. So if you don't-
Again, I, I have not actually seen an outline of what this procedure is. I will be more than happy to request that from Planning and Zoning so that I can follow it to the letter, but there was no direction given.
Well, I had seen on my email where you had asked this Mr. Webb to-
Mr. Webb.
Mr. Webb to be on there, and then you congratulated him and asked Ms., Ms. Graham to go ahead and let him take classes, but he can't do that. I mean, he has to be, and like I said, I have to make the appointment and then the council has to confirm it.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for my wording on that. I did thank him for him agreeing to serve on the board, and at this point, it is at the mayor's pleasure to approve that or not, and if a resume is necessary, I would be more than happy to provide that. Although, Ms. Graham, if you would please point me to the direction of the procedure, I would love to have an actual copy of the procedure so that I can follow it to the letter. This is not something that I had available or was provided to me, and up until this point, I did not know that it was part of the Planning and Zoning Ordinance. So thank you all very much.
And, and let me be clear, the appointment process is set forth in the ordinance, that we have one from every district, and a member from every district that we have it approved. The, the mayor makes the appointment. The practice has been to, for the mayor to accept whatever appointment has been recommended by the individual council person from that district. The request for the resume started back some time ago when there was some question about making these appointments and not knowing who was being appointed. So you're not going to find that in the zoning ordinance.
So that, that's not-
Request for a resume.
The request for a resume is not part of the zoning ordinance procedure?
No, just like the council member being allowed to name someone to serve for the mayor to appoint. That's not in the ordinance either, but it has been the practice. That was the intent when it was done, and that has been the practice since that amendment to the ordinance was, was passed.
My, my request for a complete copy of the procedure still stands. Please, thank you.
And I would give Councilman Reynolds an entire copy of the zoning ordinance.
He's got, he's got one. He was given one when he came on office. But I, I mean, I'll give you what it's, I'll give-
Would you give him another one? Another copy of it?
Yes, ma'am, if you would like.
That would be swell. Thank you.
Is there any further business?
Yes, ma'am, I'd just like to make a correction, which I don't normally do. The notification from Councilman Reynolds concerning the proposed appointee was sent, and I sent him a procedure, I sent you a procedure that time that we should follow, and told you that I needed an address. That was on February 24th or 25th. You answered my email, told me that you would send it the next morning, February 26th, and I received that reply somewhere in April, maybe a week ago. So, you know, it didn't sit in a box. It was waiting for the information that we needed.
Yes, sir, and I, I do apologize for the delay there. I, it slipped my mind to go and actually get this address, which was available in the public, public record. I eventually did pull the information from the tax assessor's information. But at, at this point, the only request I'm making is that I be informed of what else is required of me to complete that recommendation.
Is there any further business, or does anyone else have a statement that they'd like to make? I've asked for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second.